I'd like to go ahead and call to order tonight's city council meeting for June 27th. If we could say the pledge of allegiance, please.
I would like to pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Holly, will you call the roll, please? Lanian?
Present.
Pratt?
Here.
Bellinger?
Here.
Rhines?
Gilroy?
Here.
Hanson?
Here.
I am looking for a motion to excuse Councilman Rhines for this evening, please. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, all of you, thank you. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now I'm looking for approval of this evening's agenda.
Make a motion that we approve tonight's agenda.
Thank you so much. Do I support?
Support.
Thank you, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And now we have an opportunity for audience participation, maximum of five minutes per presentation. Is there anyone that would like to come forward?
We're just here for the road diet.
All right, great, thanks. Well, moving forward, we have our council meeting minutes of June 13th, 2022. I'm looking for a motion to approve unless there are any changes that need to be made.
Motion to approve council meeting minutes of June 13th, 2022.
Thank you so much, support, thank you. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Noah, you had an opportunity to look at accounts payable for this evening?
Yep, I did. I looked at it over the weekend and I had a couple of questions for Scott. He answered my questions, so I'm very comfortable with all the accounts payable items, so I'm going to make a motion to approve check 75599 dated 6/2 of 2022 to check 75656 dated 6/16 of 2022, ACH 268 through 273 for a total of $142,682.74.
Great, thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions regarding our accounts payable ledger for this evening? No? Do I have support for Noah's motion?
Of course.
Thank you so much. Holly, will you call the roll, please? Bellinger?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanian?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
All right, thank you all. Next on our agenda, we have a proclamation, and I'm so happy that I can be able to read this, and we need one more signature from Councilman Rhines. But council is very happy to recognize the 10th anniversary of Hi5 Fitness. They've been here in Williamson and a part of our community for 10 years. They are currently over on Railroad Street, and so I'd like to go ahead and read this, and then we will get that signature and get it to them for their celebration. But it is marking their 10-year anniversary of Hi5 Fitness, which was organized in 2012. And over the past decade, Nate and Emily Falpas have created and developed and nurtured a thriving community through Hi5 Fitness of Williamson for its residents and beyond. For those of you that don't know, it started out kind of as a CrossFit. It has morphed into just an amazing location where you can go, get healthy, surround yourself with people from our community that have those same goals in mind. So we're very excited to be able to recognize that for Hi5 Fitness, and again, we'll get this signed by our last council member and get it to them so that they can enjoy their celebration in July. Moving along, we're gonna go right into our action items for this evening. The first is our budget amendments fiscal year 2021 through 2022. John, you put together a memo for us, and it looks like you're gonna want individual actions on the four items that you've got listed here, so I'll go ahead and turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Gilroy, members of council. So annually, prior to the close of the current fiscal year, under generally accepted accounting practices, you're required to amend your budget if necessary. Fortunately for Williamson, we do budget amendments based on functional area rather than individual line items, which, trust me, I've done it the other way, and this is far superior, because you'd have a spreadsheet about this long, and there's a lot of ups and downs on that. So what we're asking for tonight is simply, as stated in the memo, there are the four amendments that we'll need to make, and that's for 101 General Fund, 202 Major Streets, 244 Economic Development Fund, and 906 Debt Services. In 101, the Williams Park Pavilion project was not included in the original budget. The project was started in current year, so that's the need for the adjustment in the budget in order for the general fund balance. The other three are really small and very minor, and so, you know, the staff here, prior to me, are to be commended for using good fiscal responsibility and then maintaining that when I started in February, because it's very, even great organizations like this one will have from time to time more budget amendments, which is pretty remarkable to have this view. And this is kind of in line with the number from the last couple of years. I looked at the previous memos, and when the Deputy Treasurer and Plankman ran, we were putting this together, like, okay, we're right where we should be. Because frankly, at first, I'm like, there's gotta be more than that. There can't be this good, so.
Nope, this is pretty typical. We usually have two or three, you know, so. So what I can assume then is you'd like the action, that it's gonna be requested or make a motion to amend the 2021-2022 budget for 101 General Fund with the effect on the fund of whatever the dollar amount is.
Correct.
So who would like to start out with these actions, please?
This is our last meeting of this fiscal year, is that right?
That's correct.
That's why we do this at this particular time?
Yep. Yep. So I'm looking for that first motion on the 101 General Fund.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget amendments for the General Fund 101 as presented with an effect on fund balance of zero.
All right, do I have support?
Support.
Great. Holly, can you call the roll, please? Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanian?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Thank you, I'm looking for that next action.
I'll take the next one and make a motion to approve budget amendments for Major Street Fund 202 as presented with an effect on fund balance of $0.
Thank you, do I support?
Support.
Thank you. Holly, will you call the roll? Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanian?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yeah.
Pratt?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Excellent, and the next? I figured there's four of you, there's probably actually.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget amendments for Economic Development Fund 244 presented. I didn't know it was on the schedule for tonight, but.
All right, do I have support?
Support.
Thank you so much. Holly, will you call the roll? Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanian?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
All right, and our last.
I'll make a motion to approve budget amendments of 906 Debt Services as presented.
Thank you so much. Do I have support?
I'll support.
Thank you, Noah. Can I have the roll call, Holly? Lanian?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
All right, moving along, we have our police service contract with Williamson Schools. John, you have a memo on here for us, so I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, members of council. Mayor Gilroy, the Williamson Schools approached the city about re-upping its police officer service agreement with the addition of 15 hours per week, so happy to present this to you tonight. Chief is here, if you have any questions for him. This is already signed by the school, so their school board is already with it.
Great.
Yeah, we have to answer any questions. They do pay for the service, so I think it's great for Williamson, for the schools.
Yeah, I think it's great that they are increasing their amount of time that they'd like. A safety officer there? Chief, anything to add?
No, I was excited to hear this from Lieutenant Uptina as well, that they are happy with the services they are getting from the PD, and they want more hours.
Excellent.
I guess it's great, great thing.
Excellent.
It's also expanding to all the campuses.
Okay, all right.
We're doing all three.
Yeah.
Yep.
So the safety officer will move throughout the three campuses during their time?
Yes, ma'am.
Of service, excellent. That's fantastic.
Right now, what campuses do you serve? Just the high school?
High school, middle school, and elementary school.
So the three locations?
Okay.
Do you have one officer that's still there, safety officer?
We'll have one, and then we'll have to pick up the hours, and then put another one for those extra hours.
So am I correct in thinking that the price is $30 an hour?
Yes, that is what is stated in the contract.
If I wanted to hire a police officer, could I hire him for $30?
We can talk later, sir.
Just wondering.
Chief question. This doesn't include the crossing guards as part of your staff.
No, sir, that's a different agreement.
Is that up for renewal soon, or is that?
I would have to check that. I don't think so, but I'm not sure. We have still the three, and I've got another one who's willing to fill in if it go down from the guards, so we've got a pretty good bench.
I feel honored to say this. When I came out to see the valet that happens with the traffic and all that stuff at the school there, the only comment that I received from any of the crossing guards was one of them said, "Ask them to pay me more money."
Oh, yeah, of course.
I thought, well.
Of course.
You're a crossing guard. I mean, I did that when I was in elementary school, so I didn't say that to her, but I told her that I would tell the city council of that. That's what she wanted.
Okay, well, duly noted, and thank you so much. Duly noted, thank you so much.
Are we good over there?
Are we good with the contract and everything?
Yes, there was reference to having both the mayor and city manager sign. Apparently, that was done in the past.
Okay.
Probably doesn't matter if the manager signs in addition to the mayor.
Okay, excellent. If there's no other questions or comments, I'm looking for a motion then for the police service contract for the Williamson Schools.
I'll make a motion to approve the police officer services agreement with the Williamson Community Schools and authorize Mayor Gilroy and city manager Hannah Finney to sign the agreement.
Thank you so much, thank you for the support. If there's no further discussion, Holly, will you call the roll? Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanian?
Yes.
All right, our last action item of this evening is appointment of the Election Commission. And Holly, this is something we do every year, correct? You've actually already done that this year, but since we've lost Rachel, Deputy Treasurer and Casper in that case. Excellent. Does anybody have any questions for Holly regarding Election Commission? No? All right.
I'll make a motion to appoint City Clerk Kelly Thompson, City Manager John Hannah Finney, Deputy Treasurer, and Casper to the Election Commission.
Thank you so much, and we have support. If there's no other discussion, Holly, will you call the roll? Pratt?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanian?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
All right, thank you so much. That concludes our action items for this evening. Moving along on our agenda, we're going to move into discussion items, which is actually going to be our road diet work session. And John, will you just explain for the viewing community, now that we're moving into a work session, you know, does that change the parameters of our council session?
Technically, we should suspend the rules so we can have a more free-form discussion, and that's our Robert's Rule of Orders, and so that would be the appropriate thing, is to have a motion to suspend the rules, and then that way, we can have more an open discussion, and there are a couple of members from the DDA here, we wanted to allow them to speak, and the same with the city engineer as well, the chief of police.
Excellent. I'm looking for a motion to suspend our normal rules of order, please.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules of order.
Thank you so much, do I have support? Holly, will you call a roll for that, please? Bellinger?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanian?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Thank you so much. All right, John, I'm gonna turn the record over to you.
So this is not a new topic to Williamson, and there's a lot of discussion and, you know, forward momentum on this issue pre-COVID. There was a resolution actually adopted by the city council, I believe, in 2018 that looked favorably at doing this as a concept. And just as a general overview, a road diet is typically is converting four lanes of traffic, which is two lanes in each direction, down to three lanes with one lane of traffic and then a turn lane, a lane in each direction, a turn lane. The center turn lane is, you know, one of the big features, and then as well as the possibility for high ones, the bike lanes, and things like that. And so really, the big challenge last time, and frankly, you know, there's a lot of reasons why momentum got stopped, and a lot of different projects across the country and the world, one of the primary issues was what to do with North and South Putnam and what the impact would be. We do have traffic counts in the model from previous, the previous look at this, and what that showed, and I did send that to council about a month or so ago, just so you'd have this background information. So what it shows, the traffic counts, we're in the sweet spot for a road diet. I think it's 14,000, I think is, wait, 10,000 to 14,000, Scott, is that about the number that typically?
Yeah, typically, you want to be under 15, and we don't approach that. We're right in this sweet spot.
So that's, and that's an MDOT standard. And then what the model showed, and that's one of the things we have to, as we move forward in time on this issue, we have to update those traffic counts, because they are four to five years old. The world shifted a little bit. I would think that the traffic counts are probably about the same, even with growth and population in the area, but with more people working remotely, it's probably, you know, probably about net zero as far as increased traffic counts. But part of the first book was, it's called Syncro, which is a technology that looks at traffic patterns, and is based on your traffic counts and current conditions, and some of the static shots that were set in the material, the council showed, you know, what it would look like if there was a road diet just on M43 Grand River, what it would look like if there was just on North and South Putnam, or what if they were taking a combined. And so what that Syncro model shows is that really has to be Grand River and North and South Putnam, because otherwise, there's failure, and failure means the traffic queues up so bad that, you know, the treatment you're putting in place, which is a road diet, is ineffective. So that's a general overview of where we're at. You know, our next steps would be, we'd have to update traffic counts. Really, we'll have to wait until the schools and session to do that, because summer traffic counts are skewed. You can imagine holidays and Jubilee, the traffic counts are skyrocketed, but otherwise, you know, things are pretty slower during school months. So we need to upgrade our traffic counts, then we'd update that traffic model, the Syncro model. We would have to look at the geometrics and the parking impacts on North and South Putnam, what that would look like. The good news about going for a road diet on Grand River is there's no impact to the parking on Grand River. I mean, Grand River is already four lanes wide, but parking on either side, which is awesome, it's a big wide street. Then we'd have to look at what our cost might be, because anything that we would do as a city off of M43, so any of the North and South Putnam stuff would be our responsibility to reduce costs. And so then we'd need a lot of public input, and then we'd have to work with MDOT ultimately to implement. So that's just the overview, and, you know, we could have done a full-blown, like, 20, 30 slide PowerPoint on this, but we don't have to overthink this.
Right.
It's really, it's not that challenging. I did include a slide in, this is actually Liverny, which is in the city of Ferndale, and I used, many years ago, I used to drive this road, and this is great, but this is overthinking, this is what overthinking it looks like. I mean, we don't, we don't need to do that at this level.
Right.
So really, the, you know, ultimately, the road treat that we'd be looking at is paint initially, and that's it. And then we can decide over time if we want to add cross highways or. There was one community, was it Berkeley, I think, that did it as a test. Scott and I took a little field trip. There's a bunch of them in metro Detroit that are all, like, it's in Berkeley, Ferndale, Hazel Park, they've all done these road diets, and like, the mile roads, like, 9 Mile and 8 Mile. And Berkeley actually did a temporary, and that was pre-COVID, so it's still there. So obviously, it's working for them.
Right.
So that's a lot of me talking, so, I mean, I'd be happy to entertain any questions or if council wants to have a diet.
So I actually came in and met with John earlier before council and everything, just, you know, one of those touch points and everything. And this has been something that we've talked about for quite a while. We do have new council members, you know, sitting here at the table. It is something that I think will be very beneficial to our downtown area, our community. As you all know, and we've all seen across social media, we do get a lot of commentary about our four corners, and what is going to be done to reduce the risk of getting people hit as they cross, people using North and South Putnam as right-hand turn lanes when truly no right-hand turn lane exists. They're creating that because they're scooting around traffic and making that right turn.
I'm a major believer that if you're four-lane, that if you go four-lane road.
Right, and technically, it's technically, it's not on North and South Putnam.
The more you know.
So the more you know. So I think this is something, and Noah can back me up on this, this is something that has been talked about a lot.
For years and years.
Over the years, and I think we're just at this point, whereas we keep wanting to push Williamson forward to continue our improvement, to be better in our downtown area, you know, timing is right, and I think that, you know, Scott chimed in as well, because, like I said, we've been talking about this for so long, it's something that, it's just that next progressive step that we need to do downtown at the four corners. Questions?
No, there's, I mean, you look back in the file, and some of these discussions have been going on for eight years.
Yes.
Seriously?
Yes.
So you mentioned the thing about having to redo our traffic counts and so forth? So I'm thinking, I reviewed this thing, and I thought, good, let's do it next month. But apparently, we have to do this thing, we have to revise, we have to modify, we have to analyze this more, right?
Yep.
What's the timing on that? How long does it take to do?
School, because you're gonna have bus and traffic going back and forth, drop-offs and everything, so fall.
And this is, this is a big change. It's, in my opinion, professional opinion, it's an extremely positive change, but this is a big change, and we all know, people don't like the government to change things, we know that. So this is, this is a big deal. So we have the due diligence of, you know, the data collection for traffic counts, and then we have the, and the model update's easy, but then it's the public rollout of things, and it's the discussions, and this is our first, you know, at-council discussion since I've been here, and, you know, we recruited those guys to show up too, because they want to hear what they have to say, being on the DDA. But not everybody is always going to be in favor of everything we do, but it's incumbent upon us to have as much, you know, try to anticipate the heartache that some folks may have. And let's call it like, as I said in the first meeting, the big change for folks is not necessarily the traffic patterns, it's parking.
Yeah.
It's parking on South Putnam.
Yep.
I mean, and that's, so we have to, you know, effectively communicate to the folks that may have businesses in that area, you know, parking options that are there, explore other possible ways to pick up additional parking, so.
And just to be clear too, what John mentioned, I want to make sure that we all hear this and everything, Grand River will not change with parking. Technically, there is no parking on North Putnam on either side of the street. It's gonna be that South Putnam corridor where it's affected, but we've made those improvements to that back southeast corner parking lot when we rolled that out. We do have the church parking lot that is available for parking. John and I actually were talking about, you know, Huntington Bank later in the evening. You know, technically, that's available for parking, there's no signage that says, you know, no parking private property. So we do have an abundance of parking. We are, if we do this, we are gonna lose probably, what is it, Scott? Probably 12?
12 slots.
No, probably about 20 slots on both sides if you're doing South Putnam.
It depends on how you approach it.
Right.
Because right now, you're correct, there's parking on both sides, I think it's 10 or 11 spots on each side.
Each side.
There's not enough width with the way that the curb and gutter is right now to put in three lanes plus the two lanes of parking on both sides. If you eliminate one side, there's enough space for some of that, but we can't tell you exactly how it works, but we need to be able to dig into it and really look at it.
Right, and so then that's where the updating of the model, the traffic counts come in, and then educating our downtown businesses, publicizing it so our community knows that these changes are coming, we want input, maybe hosting a town hall, a forum, where we bring all the businesses together, we put up the, what the potential could look like, and we get that in back, that feedback from them. We know that there's gonna be some pain points for South Putnam businesses.
So asking about timing, what you're saying, what I'm getting from this is that the traffic count thing is not the long pole here. The long pole is rolling out, sort of a managed rollout with the public.
Yeah, thank you. So the way I measure this is that we do traffic counts, not the first biggest school, because you always have some, you know, average numbers, but maybe the second or third biggest school is a cover, and then build the model, and then have the discussions heading into fall and winter, and then be ready with MDOT in the springtime.
In the springtime.
And that's a perfectly reasonable timeframe.
Yep.
Because I'm gonna keep saying this, at this point, it's just paint.
Yep.
Because it's what it is.
It is, just paint.
I guess.
Go ahead, Tom.
Talking about Putnam, so basically, we're gonna have a third lane to what's currently a two-lane road, regardless of what we do with parking spots or whatever. I'm just curious about pedestrian traffic. Are we gonna then have the lanes of traffic right next to the curb pedestrian traffic? Is that kind of how, I mean, is there gonna be any kind of barrier there, a bike lane?
All of that, yeah, all of that speed and turn.
Is that all thought about?
Yeah, yeah. And all that has to be part of it, because, again, we don't wanna, that's really, you know, the A number one issue that folks have brought up to me since I started in February is the four corners and, you know, how people navigate that. And, you know, your initial reaction is, well, we're going from four lanes to three, so that's gonna slow traffic, you know, or it's gonna, you know, eliminate traffic or make it, available to get through. It's actually, traffic flow is better, because, you know, I'm the newest person who drives every day here in Williamson, and I know those of you who've lived here your whole lives, tell me the right pattern to, on the four corners, because you're not, you can't tell what a person, the ones you're gonna do, right?
Right.
Because it's two lanes, there's no dedicated turn lane.
Yeah.
So that's why these are, you know, they're a proven method for enhancing pedestrian safety, but also for, you know, keeping traffic flowing.
Right.
And minimizing vehicle accidents.
The schematic that I saw showed removal of parking just on the west side of South Putnam. Parking on the east side remained there, the one that I saw during your presentation there.
Yeah.
And it looked like that was a pretty reasonable solution.
That was.
You can get three lanes in there, and you just keep parking on one side, so.
And that was the 2018, you know, that worked in that day.
Yeah, that was our idea.
That was the presentation at that point, so, I mean, I'm sure that's still valid, but we just gotta make sure that the numbers bear that out, and then, you know, maybe there's something that's changed or improved, or there's, you know, MDOT's experience with these, it's like MDOT's experience with roundabouts. They had no experience with roundabouts 10 years ago, you know, and, you know, some folks have mentioned a roundabout here, and that's, roundabout here is not the solution, because they don't really enhance pedestrian, I can tell you this personally, they don't enhance pedestrian traffic.
There's not space for a roundabout.
No, I can't even imagine a roundabout downtown.
Yeah.
And that just, I mean, I experienced them in Italy, and they work fantastic. I don't know if that would work well in Williamson. Chief, what are your thoughts?
I think it's a good idea. I think it's gonna slow it, speeding motors down. One thing I'd like to see added to this is a left turn light, so you've got that left turn lane.
Right.
Give that, because we know how much it backs up.
Right.
Going eastbound, you go northbound.
Correct.
And I can count 10 times a day people pushing that light to get through, and it's right when you're coming through, people are pushing it.
Yep.
So I think we have that opportunity to form with the turn signal. We're gonna decrease our, people running red lights decrease our chances for accidents.
Right.
Well, and I would add on to that, it's kind of where my point was gonna be, was not only on going north, but the reason why some of us mistakenly believe that there's a right turn lane or a second lane there, because on North and South, you get, you know, the slow backups there, and not a lifelong resident here, the shocking amounts of semi-trucks could be driving through this town. I mean, with the one lane, it's gonna slow everything down, because it takes forever to get halted at a light, so having a turn lane would make that, an actual light would make that work in this scenario, because that would be my one concern, is that, yeah, we'll have a left turn light, that's somebody needs a turn light, that they always seem to do there, and like, no one's getting through traffic there.
Right.
So.
And I think, and I want to try to clarify too, it won't be just paint, because we're probably gonna have to have some signage as coming into town that says, "New traffic flow," or something.
Absolutely, yeah.
So there will be signage, there will be new paint, it won't be anything as radical as putting traffic islands.
Yeah.
We hope not on Grand River or Putnam, because I don't think that we have the space for it, obviously, and.
Some I've been turned off.
Then they, well, that would solve your problem.
They may make a turn right now, I wish, maybe we should.
Right, but I'm excited, I'm excited to bring this back and start working on it, and have our goal be spring of 2023, once we have all of our data collected, once we have, you know, what it could look like, conversation with MDOT.
One addition I would ask about, the thing I find difficult about the four corners here in Williamson is going along Grand River, you're going Grand River, Grand River, Grand River, you want to continue on Grand River, but it's a half-left to continue on Grand River. Often in places like that, there's a dashed line that kind of shows you the middle of the road. Is there an idea to add that to it, something like that?
We can look at that. I think I understand what you're talking about.
Yeah, it's a little like, it gets a little funky sometimes.
Dog legs a lot. Because of the curve that happens through the intersection, as we're talking about.
Yeah, if you come through it right side by side to someone.
We'd have to have some discussions with them done about that.
Yep. Yeah, I mean, we're not just gonna go out in the middle of the night with some paint cans and change our street. This is gonna, you know, this is gonna.
It might get cheaper.
Maybe could, we won't.
Okay, make sure you let everybody know, Chief, for example, you know, random people with fake paint cans. But no, I'm so excited that this is gonna be another thing that we're gonna be able to do for our community.
We're gonna hear, do the DDA folks have things?
Yeah, what do you guys, you're here.
I'd like to hear.
Do we stand up?
Yeah, come forward, yep, sure, why not?
So I think the biggest issue is, we need some kind of flashing light for pedestrians.
Yeah.
Because there's not, I mean, they, you see the walking sign, they don't see the walking sign.
Right.
So with all the businesses I have in town, I'm left, right, all over the place, and this last weekend, I was the same way.
Sure.
So what I've noticed is, they don't pay attention to that walking sign, and so, and places like Brighton, they have it built into the road where it like flashes, which pedestrians walking.
Yep.
So that's, that's the only thing I really have input wise, but.
Yep.
We need something, it's, even with our, my meeting with John a couple of weeks ago, he almost got hit. So it's.
It was like Garrett's gotta stand up for almost, you know.
I almost got hit on the way over here.
Oh, gosh. So here's what I will say, and we can go back and look at the records and everything. So here's what I will say, and we can go back and look at the records and everything. When we put in the new crosswalk down in front of the apartment building, and it's the crosswalk going north to south on Grand River, right there by Brun's Pizza and the oil loop change. We did the signage, we did the paint, correct me if I'm wrong Scott, the flashing lights as you approach for the new pedestrian were in the ballpark of thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars for that system.
It's not cheap.
It's not cheap.
But the other issue that came up is MDOT had to do a study.
Yes, and they warranted that it was not necessary.
Correct.
So, that would be something we'd want to bake into this study as to what else could we do with those four-way pedestrian walks?
Who would you, so we've been looking at like a hundred thousand for that, right?
It would just depend on the system that we would bring in. Would we do a solar on top of the light? Because I just saw one on the campus of MSU where it's a walk system, you press the button.
Yeah.
But it also has a solar panel that's helping feed the electrical, so. And Scott's gonna have to, you know, he'll be involved in all of this to figure out what can we do? How much is it gonna cost? Is it feasible?
Think of it like this, somebody gets hit like the motorcycle this weekend.
No, I know, I understand.
Hundred thousand is.
I know.
That's, I think that's relatively low for some, some kind of safe interactive system.
Absolutely. Yep.
So on the visceral hurt issue, you are more likely than anybody else to have some sort of a sense of being hurt, losing parking spaces near your businesses.
Uh, yes and no. As long as people, we, we just did this huge adjustment with the, the time limit. As long as people respect that, I think, I think, I, since we improved the time limits.
Yep.
And I, I do talk to the, the other businesses that are in our area.
Yeah.
As long as people respect that, we've been fine. I, and we've gotten compliments by the one that we thought would be the most troublesome. So I, 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 and I think Chief, as he's done his rounds with that business and I don't know if there's been calls lately, but he's, they seem, seem happy.
I remember the planning commissioner was gonna be a complaint-driven system, so. And nobody complains and nobody goes, so you don't have people marching around there and stopwatches and so forth.
I haven't had a call or complaint, I would say, in two months.
Okay.
It's gonna happen, but I don't, I don't.
It's an, it was an educational process, it was a learning process, and I think, I think we're good.
Okay. So, uh, as I understand it, the biggest objection is the missing parking spots.
So it depends on if you're removing all or some. So I think there will be a battle with that, with the, with the Putnam businesses, but the, you gotta think in the long run too of how this is gonna help flow. I think it's gonna be better. We are, we've talked about this, we're a walking community.
Yeah.
And that, every community is, is lucky, we have probably more parking spots than most communities, we think, but I don't know if. And so I think, I think it, it's gonna take, you're getting used to, but.
And, but that was one thing John and I just talked about earlier tonight too. A lot of our businesses are time-driven businesses, like LA's Country Kitchen, we know they get a, a big breakfast crowd. But then Grand River, all of a sudden, is open for parking. So if you are parking on Grand River to walk around to the corner to the pharmacy or to the glassworks or to the hardware, it's not that much of a hardship, but they also have the parking behind, they have the parking in the church parking lot. So depending on the scenario that we end up with for South Putnam, whether it's east side parking that goes away, west side parking goes away, or we reduce parking so that we can keep some, just depending on how this map looks for, you know, what we're doing with these lanes. You know, I think that everybody is going to be very understanding of it, because we're improving the traffic flow. And there, it's not like we don't have any downtown parking area. It might not be as convenient as getting directly out of your car and walking into a business, but it is going to be that progressive movement forward that I think we need.
I think the focus though, as we said, it, it needs to be on that we're doing this mostly for a safety issue.
Yes.
The amount, every, hey, it's every day we're getting posts about the same, now, now, two days in a row, we've, we had the one that was actually hit and the one that got posted that there was nearly a motorcycle accident the day after. And so I think if, you know, our main focus is like, wait, listen, this is a tough, this is a hardship, but we're trying to keep our citizens safe. Like, you've been in play about that too much.
No, absolutely.
There's fifteen people in this room, and we've heard from, I think, two or three people
Two people.
that you almost got hit in the last week or something, so.
I have nine employees, every single one of those employees have almost been hit.
Yep.
So much, one, one employee even says, I hope, well, like when I make her run in there, she's like, I hope I'm back.
I hope I go back.
Yeah, that's not good.
Yeah, and so it's become that kind of humor because of, it's, it's dangerous there.
Yeah. Right.
And it's.
Yeah, and like I said, this is the, I'm glad that it's coming back, I'm glad we're going to, we're going to make this happen. And so I look forward to spring twenty twenty-three when we can say, look what we did.
So I guess, we've had a lot of talk about pedestrian traffic, even more than vehicle traffic. Will this road diet substantially improve pedestrian safety?
Oh yeah. Yeah, and that, that's what I was gonna, I had my hand up. So the, the, the signal out there, it's, it's just the signal, right? It goes, it's red, yellow, green. Um, this will add turn lanes, it'll add pedestrian level signs, and it'll be a smart traffic signal. Where I'll have the ocular reader, which will queue up, if there's nobody turning left, it'll stay green. And that's the difference, I mean, that's what you just, and that technology's not like, you know, crazy expensive or different. It's just, it's just new, that's, it, or newer compared to what we have. But yes, that's the goal. If it doesn't improve pedestrian, uh, then, then there's no point doing it.
Right.
The other thing is that there's talks about, you know, different treatments like the, you know, the flash, like the, I, I know what, what was referring to in Brighton with the crossing there. MDOT will allow most of those things, um, you just have to pay for the enhancements, that's the difference. Which is okay, it's okay if we decide it, it's important enough.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Within our financial reasons, then, then by all means, let's do it.
I was gonna ask about the finances, so is this, somebody said a hundred thousand dollars is in round figures?
Well, if you were to.
Twenty for each.
Twenty for each of the crosswalks. Enhance crosswalks, you know.
There are other, there are other interim treatments you can do and, and, you know, whether it's just um using a, like a polymer cover. You don't, you don't do stamp bricks anymore and, and for a lot of reasons, but there's ways to enhance a crosswalk that it looks more pedestrian, shorter than what you're. They're called rapid flash peaking, someone that you are familiar with. There was a little slowdown on those, because there were some patent issues with those, but they're all widely commercially available. And they're not cheap, but yeah, when you're putting something up that theoretically is gonna be there for, you know, if it's twenty grand, it's gonna be there for twenty years. That's a pretty low return on investment.
So, so the next meeting is our first meeting for the next fiscal year. Do we have something in the budget for the fiscal year that says, let's do this?
We, we do not, but again, we will have, yeah, as we move into spring, um, we'll, we'll have all of those things identified and we should be ready to go. You know, the first phase of this would really be the MDOT painting portion. And if we're adding the, the, the painting side on, you know, part of the north and south, that's, you know, within our, our, our approved budget.
We'll provide the cash, okay. Maybe something major.
Major streets or something, yeah. So I guess, you know, closing out and if nobody else has any questions or discussion points, we've got the next steps here. Um, John, I guess what I would say is, if we could kind of put together a timeline.
Sure.
And have it available in the next packet, because that'll be our kickoff for fiscal year. And just kind of throw some months out there, you know, we know crosswalk, or we know the traffic counts are gonna happen in September. Um, you know, when do we anticipate model? Is that gonna be, you know, October, November, wait till the, you know, the counts come back? Um, uh, and then as you and Scott work with MDOT, you know, you got, you guys will have updates for us and let us know how it progresses. Is everyone good with that?
Hmm.
All right, wonderful, thank you so much. Excellent dialogue, and like I said, I'm excited to actually see this happen, because we've talked about it for so long. And educating our community, and as we learn more as council members and we're out talking to people, um, the community's gonna get excited too.
Why isn't we even in the message side? We're trying to say, it's been going for years and years and years, and finally just, okay, we've done it, we've, this is, we're done. So same thing with the traffic pattern, done it years and years and years, okay, let's just do it.
And it takes time, I mean, birthing these projects takes time, we understand it. And we don't wanna throw money at something and have it backfire on us. And we do put in the, the work and the time and the effort to make sure that we do it right for the community. That's the biggest thing, and I think that we can all be very excited about this and very proud of when it gets executed on every single level of our, of our, you know, from DPW, city staff, council members, and, um, you know, it's gonna be, you know, that much well-deserved improvement that we've been wanting.
Good.
Good.
Excellent. All right, well, moving along on our agenda, uh, we did not receive any correspondence, so I'll move to our department head report, so John.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to pass on, I spoke to Councilman Ryan today, and he's got a well-reserved, a well-reserved night off from all of working Jubilee. And I thank him for all he does for, for Jubilee and for what Jubilee does for the community, but he did wanna pass along his, his thank you to our, our Public Works Department and to Scott and his staff for, for their assistance. So we had an issue with the water, or what could have been an issue with water over there, and they were able to solve it pretty quickly. Everything was able to, to move forward. Um, you know, we had a busy week with meetings with Tifa and DDA, but I thought we had two really good meetings last week. And then we have a planning commission meeting tomorrow, um, so, and some planning commission things on the horizon, so.
Excellent. Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Chief?
Thank you, ma'am. I also wanna echo on the Jubilee, from, from the PD perspective, we had a very successful week. Very low police activity. Couple of drunk drivers, um, I will mention the motorcycle later, P I. I like to, you know, give a shout out to our reserves, those guys are the backbone when it comes to those events. Nisa helping us with traffic for the parade, it's just, we all came together, it was one big team and it, it was really good. From, again, from my perspective, uh, congratulations to the Jubilee Committee, what a great job pulling it off. I heard nothing but positive things, I'm sure. I don't have Facebook, so I don't know what negative things got said, but.
Sure.
But I've had a lot of feedback, just from.
Positive almost outweighs the negative, so.
Interacting with the, the citizens. Um, we've been busy this last month, uh, again, our drug drivers are still up, we knocked off six this past month. One in particular, twelve-thirty in the afternoon, that's during the daylight hours. Came as, came as a, a BOL out of Meridian Township, a gentleman pulling off into Saint Martha's Church to relieve himself and.
A BOL?
Be on the lookout?
Be on the lookout.
Sorry? And the car came back on a halt, they said he left east on Grand River, and I'm praying, go south, go south. And so I'm restoring traffic, um, out on Grand River, and I, and I knock him off at forty-nine miles an hour into thirty-five. I get the lights on right away, and he's not stopping, he comes up to the four corners at a higher rate of speed, I thought he was gonna crash. Finally get him stopped and, uh, his blood came back at a point two-four. Three times the legal limit, this is his third offense, no driver's license, he's from halt, thought he was in halt, and he was still going to halt.
I thought he was going.
Looking for the crystal.
Yeah. So, so again, reiterate, you know, the, in my opinion, the, 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 just the, the emphasis on speed enforcement from, from my seat. I know, again, many, you know, I'm state trooper, I love doing traffic.
Right.
I just, you know, not everybody gets a ticket, but it's out there making that, that, that safe, like I come into, into town at fifty miles an hour.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, again, we could have a repeat of the moped incident a few years back. You know, and getting the unsafe drivers off, off the streets, so.
Quick question here? What, you said check for the, the crystal, is that?
That was a bad joke.
There was a bar.
There's a bar at home that's called the Crystal Bar.
Oh, 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 I thought you meant by crystal meth.
No, 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 no.
No, this, this guy was upset, his, his wife had COVID. I talked to her, and he was told to go get a COVID test, instead he went out to drink a fifth of raw liquor. So after I headed over to the hospital, spent three hours with him, I get a phone call that, hey, he's probably COVID positive. Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Knock on wood, I didn't get it though.
Good, excellent.
So, um, we had several assists to Meridian Township. Um, you know, calls out the township that they couldn't take or were needing backup on to assist them. Several assists to, uh, to Nisa, we had a couple fires recently where we provided traffic control and medical assists. So we're, we're, we're still very active in, in that area, you know, assist the public, stuff like that. Uh, another positive thing here, and it's the last one I've got, uh, in-car cameras, we're updating our system.
Good.
From generation one. So we got some brand new car, in-car cameras coming, they're getting installed this week, and we got body cameras. We'll get training on those the second week of July.
Excellent.
So every officer, reserve officer, who's out there who's gonna have a camera on them.
Well, you know, everything that you guys do, um, these improvements that we've made with equipment, it's all about keeping our community safe, keeping you guys safe when you're out there on the road, and keeping our guests that come through Williamson safe, our residents, our businesses, so I appreciate all of that. Any questions for Chief on anything that he had to share? Excellent. All right. Thank you, Chief, appreciate it. All right, committee, subcommittee reports, I know that we had Jubilee, I know that, um, some of our meetings have been postponed due to lack of agenda items. Is there anybody that would like to share anything?
Tifa did meet, um, and positive news, uh, well, last time I covered it, um, we were discussing the possibility that that house is gonna get back to the city, because it wasn't, their tender has been signed. But positive news, um, that they come to Tifa last ti- uh, last week and said that they were reformulating a new plan that would allow them to move forward.
Excellent.
Hopefully, um, so they just sent renderings, uh, to Tifa and to John, and so, um, you know, hopefully moving forward, we'll be able to keep that business going there, and then once their birth business starts getting up to, up to speed, they'll be able to do more without it, so to keep it.
Excellent.
Maintained. Um, so it's positive news, because we thought we were gonna have to go down another path, so.
Good.
That was, that was a positive turn.
Excellent. Uh, maintaining a historical building is no easy feat.
No, not at all.
So I'm encouraged by hearing that, because it is a pretty cool building.
Yeah.
Um, with a lot of history here in town, so that's fantastic.
Although we will note that it is probably true that the building is very decrepit.
Yes, yes.
There is no promises that the building's being maintained, but this is a path forward that could most likely maintain it.
Well, I, I hope. And I hope they find resources that they can do it, I know there's historical preservation grants out there. They could probably call up MEPC and see if there's anything, um, as far as their industry and what they're doing, if, if that would, um, give them some additional funding so that they can keep this moving forward, but I'm excited about it. So thanks for that. Tom, anything from Nisa?
Nope.
Terry, have you gone to any of your meetings?
Park and Rim is the only one they did meet.
Okay. Noah?
Good.
All right. So that's the end for the committee subcommittee reports, audience participation, anything from you guys?
Good.
All right, uh, council member comments, sorry, Noah?
Uh, I would just like to thank all the city staff, uh, Police Department, Public Works, the Jubilee Committee, and all the supporting organizations such as the Quanians and those groups for a wonderful week of activities this last, this last week. Enjoyed every minute of it, and my wife even got to ride in this beautiful yellow Corvette.
Yes, she did, shout out to Beth, all of the other.
Practice was a good success.
Good, I was just gonna ask you about that. Um, yeah, shout out to all of the recipients from Monday evening's Citizen of the Year Award, there were so many. Um, that was a great event to attend. Terry?
First time to go to a demolition derby in about forty years, and it was a kick in the pants. It was, it was really, really good, I really enjoyed it.
Good.
I think we should do it again next year.
Okay, cool, we'll let Dan know. All right, Brandon?
Uh, I mean, similar comments, uh, it was great, uh, Harvey loved the duck drop, so that was really cool, they did it in the parking lot, so he was able to like, you know, get soaking wet and.
Awesome.
Do all that, so, um, that, all the food was good, so it was a good time.
Tom?
Staying here, I just thank everyone that had work involved with the Jubilee, it was a great week and a lot of fun, all the events seemed to go off really well. It was a, it was a really good week.
It was a, it was a really good week.
Excellent. Well, I just wanna, I wanna thank everybody that, you know, it's not just for our community, it's for our guests too that love to come to festivals of any, uh, type. I was there on Friday night, the fireworks were phenomenal, they were fantastic. Zenda's actually happened to be in the tent, and I went over and, you know, thanked them for, for sponsoring the way they did. I've heard nothing but positive, uh, you know, reports back out from all of the, you know, all the service organizations that participate, because it, it really takes a lot of effort to pull this off every year. The Jubilee Committee works tirelessly. They will take a brief, you know, relaxing, relaxation period, but they will already start probably within another month or so about ideas for next year, how to improve. So if you have any interest and would like to volunteer during that week or help put together a new activity that could be incorporated into Jubilee next year in June of twenty twenty-three, please seek somebody out that's on the Jubilee Committee. Um, I just, you know, I can't say enough about our community and how we come together for events like that. And, and summer is just getting started, so we still have, uh, ban show concerts in the park on Thursday evenings. Uh, we have National Night Out to look forward to in August, and, and everything in between, uh, before school kicks back up. We've got our wonderful, wonderful farmer's market every Sunday, right there at the corner of McCormick Park. So I would just encourage people to continue to come out to Williamson, see what we have to offer, it's, it's a wonderful place to be. And our downtown, uh, businesses are thriving. Um, in fact, uh, DDA, we just had two businesses apply for facade grants. Um, one is our Botany Boutique, which used to be Bibby's Floral. And then also InKind Bakery is going to do, uh, new frontage. So both of those, uh, businesses will have new frontage put up, and the drawings that they brought are beautiful, it's gonna be amazing. Um, Garrett Deer moving over into the Tapakellers with Golden Dandelion, um, so shout out to Garrett, he's moving his business. Will is moving the hive over into Golden Dandelion, and they've already repainted the front of it as of today. So there's so much happening in our downtown area, I'm, I'm, I'm excited about it. And so I hope that businesses still keep coming and filling up, you know, anything that's vacant. Um, that's my, that's my comments for this evening. I, I think that, you know, summer's kicked off very nicely this past week, because it was the first day of summer during Jubilee, which was fantastic. Um, so I will go ahead and call our meeting adjourned at seven fifty-two.